City Council Regular Meeting of July 22. We're getting a really nice rainstorm out there right now, which I cannot complain about with the fire danger. So we're going to start our regular meeting. Would you call the roll, please? Mike?
Counselor Benedetti.
She will be joining us online. She is online. Okay. Can you pop it up so she's over there with the panelists and I can see her? Thank you.
I'm here. Hi.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Rose? Oh, sorry. Counselor Guth? Counselor Rose?
Here.
And Mayor Richards?
Here. Thank you. We have no scheduled public appearances today, but we do have time for citizen comments and petitions. Ruth, would you like to come up? Just identify yourself for the record and...
You just did.
Well, I didn't have your last name, Ms. Ruth Harrison.
Now you do.
Yeah, now I do. Anyhow, if you would like to keep it to about three minutes, and we're glad you came here.
Okay. Ruth Harrison, I have five different quick things. One, if we would have listened to Tony Kronberg fifty years ago and Jim Markalunas, we would have a gondola for traffic and a train. So we screwed that up good. Let's see. Something needs to be done. The stop signs in the West End, the trees need to be pruned. Somebody almost ran right into me. You cannot see one of the stop signs. They went right through it, and it wouldn't have been their fault. So they need to be pruned. The signs that say only go one block is totally absurd because now, instead of having -- they're worried about traffic. Now, instead of having three or four lanes to go through the West End, you have one less. So I don't get the point, and it doesn't serve any purpose. And the people who break that rule or law, the most are the people who live there. And if you don't believe me, you can ask the cops. So. The fire danger, I do not understand why we cannot go to Stage Two. I don't understand what the downside of Stage Two is. Carbondale is in Stage Two. There's been fires up and down the whole valley, all the way to Grand Junction. I just, I can't get an answer as to why we can't go into Stage Two. I'd like to see a doggy park, meaning a park that is fenced in. There are so many dogs in this town. This is a dog town, and there's, there isn't any completely 100% fenced-in parks. There might be one. Pioneer Park might be, but it's very, very small. So we need a fenced-in. And the two that I would think of at first are the Ajax Park, which is off of Ute, and then the other one would be the Whittaker Park, which is right in town. Those are the only two I can think of off the top of my head that would work. And my last thing is, is that I'd like to know how I can change, and I've spoken to many different people, how I can change the law about people who have animals. Anybody can adopt and have an animal as long as they are given water, fed, water, food, and shelter. Okay? I know somebody who never, ever, ever walks their dog. Two dogs, they never walk them. They poop on the deck, they pee on the deck, but they never walk them. And it just, it drives me crazy. And I'd like to, I don't know how to go about it, but I would like to change that law. And I don't know who to talk to.
I don't either, Ruth, but I can take a look into it.
That would be wonderful.
And to just say, you and I tend to think a lot alike. I talked to Pete about trimming trees not long ago at all, that I see them getting overgrown, and we need our people out there checking it.
Well, there's one, one place that you can't, literally.
Which corner?
I want, Francis and something. I'm not sure. I was just so taken aback that. Then I looked, and I went, it's not that guy's fault. You couldn't even see it.
Okay. And I have brought up and mentioned dog parks as a potential. I'd love to see that. We're all concerned with fire danger. I've spoken to someone on the phone the other day who wanted to know, could we beef up Stage One? And again, that has a lot to do with the Fire District and the Pickens County Sheriff making the decision.
I've spoken to everybody. I've spoken to everybody, and it's not happening. And I do not understand what the downside is of being overly, you know, cautious and go up to Stage Two. I don't get it.
I, I can understand that. And just so you're aware, there were a lot of people who supported rail back in the day, but the citizens of Aspen voted against it in the year 2020.
I know. I was here.
Yeah. Okay. There we go. Anybody else?
Yeah, the thing about changing...
I will look into how we look at the animal welfare laws.
Okay. Well, and see if there's anything you think that we can do to change it, even if it's just for Aspen.
We'll take a look.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
You can get back to me. You want my phone number?
I can get ahold of you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment. Francis and then Tony.
The regulars.
July 22. Ms. Mayor, members of the council, how are you? How's everyone?
Good.
July 22. Here's my comments.
Francis, your last name for the record?
Stuckins.
There we go.
S-T-U-C-K-E-N-S. Very rare.
Thank you.
I have no idea why. The bike trail, the e-bikes, the bells. I love the sign that says, "Slow, announce when passing." No one's paying attention. I got creamed coming out of the underpass near Trescott. I'm not hurt. I got, you know, a little scratch. But, yeah, and the kids were riding really fast with no helmets. So I, I think the signage is great, but no one's really paying attention. They should be reading books. City market, wine and beer sales, and now with the remodel, it's total inconvenience for the customers. I shop at Clark's now. And again, the wine and beer sales, I don't think that's good for our independent liquor stores here that have been here, especially Carl's, which has been here since the 70s. I don't know what we can do, but I think one Kroger that doesn't sell wine, we could have a vote or something, that doesn't sell wine or beer, that'd be great. And as far as the inconveniences, I hope that, you know, they get bread again. Aspen Daily News, Roger Maralt, Steve Skinner, all these columnists, Annalise Gruder, are blowing my mind with how brave they are, just saying what they need to. And I'm, I'm in agreement. I'm not a columnist, you know, I write science fiction, but one of these days. The clock on Hopkins and Monarch is off by 10 minutes. It's 10 minutes slow.
Who's clock is it?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah. We, so we might need to look into that. The traffic still blows crossing the street. If we're crossing 82 from the Aspen country end, it's just an incredible cluster. I won't say, yeah, but, I mean, it's unbelievable. And there's usually just one person in the car. So I think it's, you know, I mean, I count them, and I count a dozen, but I think this rafters thing, where we have some kind of service to be able to get people into town out of their cars would be great. What else? That's about it. So, did I make my three minutes?
You just hit it just about right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, and thanks for doing what everybody does here.
Thanks, Francis.
All right. We will see, is there any other public comment in the room? Tony, I'd already called on you.
Will you come up next? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Tony Kronberg, and I'm flattered that Ruth said something about Jim Markalunas advocating for the rail and myself advocating for the gondola, because if we really were listened to back in the day, we wouldn't have these transportation issues right now. But Rachel, you said something that kind of cued me a little bit, and that was, you said the voters voted against rail. So I'm wondering, in whether we wind up with a new environmental impact study or reevaluation, is rail going to go away? Because it's really never going to happen, and it's still there as a placeholder. So maybe perhaps we should take a look at replacing the rail with the gondola, at least from Brush Creek into Aspen. And then, of course, my comments and I do have to do with some items that are on your consent calendar tonight, and I was wondering if you were planning on pulling them, either to take, to discuss them or to take public comment. And the one that I would like to make a comment on, if I can't make it, if you pull it, then I can make it now, and that has to do with Resolution 104, Series of 2025, which is setting forth upcoming steps related to the entrance to Aspen and directing staff to pursue a reevaluation of the environmental impact statement and the record of decision. Would you like me to make my comments now, Mayor?
You have two minutes, Tony.
Okay. So in the resolution, you have a title, you have your whereas's, and you have your operative clauses, which is the direction that you're giving staff. But I don't see any findings in the resolution. So I'm wondering, the question that I have is, and I'll read it for you, is that, "Instead of finishing the good work already started on a new environmental impact statement process by staff and Jacobs Engineering, staff is being asked to change horses mid-crossing in high water and to begin work on a new reevaluation process of the 1998 Record of Decision." So tonight's Resolution 104 is getting, 2025 is getting rid of Resolution 113, Series of 2024, and I would like for you to state for the record why you've decided to do that. Thank you very much. Those are my comments. And I'm bleeding. I apologize. I should probably wipe this up.
Thank you. If there's anyone who will catch that. Thank you very much, Tony. Additional members of the public who would like to make public comment? Tara Nelson?
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor, council members. Tara Nelson, I reside on Cemetery Lane, and I just wanted to come up here and talk about the traffic on Cemetery Lane. I've been up here before to discuss that. And the latest iteration isn't a school bus, but it's about to probably happen, but cars are passing buses and other cars on double lane, on Cemetery Lane. And I'm a frequent bus rider, so the latest incident was the bus stopped before the crosswalk to allow me to cross the crosswalk, and a car did pass the bus at that same time. And thankfully, I'm still here today to talk to you about it. But on purpose, the bus driver did that because he had so many people behind him and because he had actually just been telling me how atrocious, atrocious it is for him to be driving. Just the general sentiments of everyday life of people commuting in and out of town. But I just wanted to add the emphasis that Cemetery Lane is pretty dangerous. And as school's about to start, I hope we can somehow find a fine balance with the school buses, the rafta buses, the commuters, the people, the bikers, everything. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks.
You know...
Thank you for your comments on that. And I'll just say, we've received a significant letter writing campaign, a number of new people I haven't heard from before and haven't really personally met, who are really sounding off as they should about public safety, children's safety, and these community issues. And I have emailed and talked to Pete about it, and Pete will, during his manager's comment, talk a little further.
I appreciate that. I don't think everybody has the access to get online for a survey or to look at what maybe consultants are doing, but if we could get more people here to just share that voice.
Yeah, we need short-term and interim solutions until we're able to move forward with a bigger fix. So I really, I appreciate you taking the time to let us know.
Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Anything online? No, I'm not seeing anything. Okay, we will close the public comment, and we're going to have a small change in the agenda program. There's a kind of a last-minute proclamation that I'd like to read for the public, and I'd like to invite some of our guests up who are associated with that. This, this Friday on the 25th, there will be a special unveiling at 5:00 PM at 435 East Main Street on the Locals Corner Building, where a new mural is being printed. Would, printed, painted. Would you please tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Richards and members of City Council. My name is Katie Kiernan. I'm the founder of 212 Gallery, and I'm here tonight with my team on behalf of our gallery and the many residents and visitors of Aspen who deeply value public art and cultural legacy to respectfully propose that the city consider officially recognizing Shepard Ferry for his many contributions to our town over the years. Over the past seven years, Shepard has made a lasting impact on Aspen through his art, his generosity, and his collaboration with our community. As you all know, in 2018, he unveiled his first downtown mural titled Ideal Power next to the Big Rap. He also donated artwork to support Anderson Ranch that same summer. Last December, his generous contributions helped us raise $85,000 for AEF, the Aspen Education Foundation.
Wow.
And last night, Shepard landed in Aspen, went immediately to participate in Anderson Ranch lecture series, and at the crack of dawn this morning began creating the beautiful mural that we will be unveiling on Friday at 5:00 PM. These current projects are drawing both regional and national media attention, and I believe help affirm Aspen's leadership in championing public art and just contributing to the visual landscape and the history of our town. So of course, I want to invite all of you to the unveiling on Friday at 5:00 and to all of the surrounding events. And just to say how much I appreciate all the support that I've gotten from the city and the community. And again, I hope that you will consider officially recognizing Shepard, if that's possible.
I think we will be, and I, myself, will not be back in town in time to attend this, but Mayor Pro Tem John Doyle has committed to go and represent the city, and I hope everyone else turns out who can. And so I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll ask Mike to call the roll, and we will approve it as an official resolution of the City of Aspen. Proclamation of the City of Aspen. Whereas Shepard Ferry is an internationally acclaimed contemporary artist, activist, and cultural icon, whose work has profoundly influenced the global art landscape and inspired countless individuals through messages of justice, peace, environmental stewardship, and civic engagement. And whereas in 2018, Shepard Farley hosted, unveiled his first large-scale mural installation in downtown Aspen, contributing to the town's visual landscape and public art legacy. And whereas Mr. Ferry has continued to support Aspen's creative institutions through philanthropy, endeavors, and collaboration, including contributions to the Anderson Arts Ranch Center and the Aspen Education Foundation, helping raise significant funds for local arts and education initiatives. And whereas in July 2025, Shepard Farley returns to Aspen to unveil his second public mural, One Earth, a bold and beautiful work that reflects Aspen's core values, reverence for nature, the pursuit of justice, creative independence, and a deep belief in the power of art to build community and inspire meaningful discourse. Whereas Shepard Farley's lasting impact on the cultural fabric of Aspen is evident not only in his visual contributions, but in his commitment to accessibility, dialogue, and civic engagement through art. And whereas honoring Shepard Farley with a Day of Recognition is a meaningful way for Aspen to celebrate his contributions to the town's artistic identity, cultural legitimacy, and shared commitment to protecting our environment and elevating public discourse. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Rachel Richards, Mayor of Aspen, do hereby proclaim July 25, 2025, as Shepard Ferry Day in the City of Aspen, Colorado, and encourage all residents and visitors to recognize and celebrate the power of art to inspire, connect, and create lasting impact. Thank you so much. Mike, would you call the roll that we will formally approve this?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. And thank you again, and I hope we see the whole community turnout at 5:00 PM on Friday.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to the council member and mayor's comments. John and Sam, if you guys have anything to offer?
Got anything?
Oh, just, I know, I talked to the mayor about this earlier, and Pete, I said, we'll address it, but just the traffic in the West End and the emails that we received and the things that we've experienced, as I just don't want to go unnoticed by myself, and I know others at council, and I'm always looking towards positive solutions on that issue in particular, especially this time of year. So I look forward to seeing what is brought back to us to help mitigate at least what we can.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about water today. The latest river report from the Roaring Fork Conservancy's summary says that rivers in the Roaring Fork watershed are flowing between 15 and 66% of normal last week. Just think about that for a second. 15% to 66% of normal. As flows continue to decrease, water temperatures are rising, resulting in less oxygen for fish and other aquatic wildlife. We don't have any fishing restrictions right now in the Roaring Fork River, but they do in the Yampa Basin up near Steamboat and all of western Montana has fishing restrictions because of the warmth of their water. And they're also in drought there as well. Extreme drought has expanded to most of Pickens County and most of the water, Roaring Fork watershed. Extreme drought is four out of five levels of intensity. The only part of Pickens County that isn't in extreme drought are the High Peaks to our east on the Continental Divide, and they're in severe drought. The river, the water levels for the Roaring Fork River at Aspen is 79 cubic feet per second. The norm is 160 feet. The frying pan above Rudy is at 96 cubic feet per second. The norm is 227. The Crystal River above Carbondale is at 70 cubic feet per second. The norm is 472 cubic feet per second. Roaring Fork River at Glenwood, 698. The norm is 2,090. And the Colorado River at Glenwood Springs is at 2,170 cubic feet per second. The norm is 4,793. So every single drainage in our vicinity is, is at less than half of its normal flow. I'm glad it's raining right now, but I want everybody to abide by the fire restrictions that we have in place and hope that we do move into Stage Two soon, as Ruth Harrison pointed out. And it's for this reason that I'm really pleased that this council has made resiliency one of our top priorities, because we're going to need more water storage as we move forward in the continuing year of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And it's worth noting, the city is in Stage One voluntary water restrictions, so please use your water wisely. Everything we don't take out gets to stay in the stream for the trout. And don't over-fertilize your yard. Those are really important things, because it gets so concentrated in the low flows. Did you, you already had? Okay. Thank you. I actually have a small number of announcements. Oh, Christine, do you have comments online? Can you pop her name up? So it'll be with the participants or attendees or something? Because it's not on the screen. Thank you for that, Sam. Okay. Nothing today, Christine?
Yeah, nothing today. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a number of announcements to make for our community, particularly on Tuesday, July 29, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Pickens County Senior Center is having an open house with free events, including senior events, fitness classics, live music, and some refreshments. And so they want to hear from their community and anyone else who cares about seniors or is approaching their senior years to come and show up at the Senior Center on Castle Creek Road on Tuesday, July 29. The Red Brick Arts and Recreation Center is also having, on July 24, an open house from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and it's going to be in association with the Aspen Chamber Resort Association. So it's a chance for activations, demos... So it's a chance for activations, demos, short performances, and various other activities for people to join in with art making. So that's where I refer at our Red Brick Center for the Arts on July 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Another kind of exciting thing is that we're having a permitting mix and mingle. And so if you are interested in how permits are processed in the city, it's going to be Wednesday, July 23rd, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM in the Dunaway Room in the Picken County Library. It's a chance to connect with Aspen permitting staff from various departments, including building, planning, engineering, utilities, parks, and parking, to learn about the permitting process, build relationships, and ask questions. So there will be light refreshments. That's Wednesday, July 23rd, 4:00 to 5:00 PM, at the Picken County Library in the Dunaway Room. We're also working with Qualified Water Efficient Landscaping. And the City of Aspen has partnered with Water Now Alliance to host a three-day Qualified Water Efficient Landscaper, known as Quell, training course from September 23rd through the 25th. And this is designed for landscape professionals, resort and ground staff, water utility staff, municipal staff, anyone engaged in water irrigation management in the Roaring Fork Valley. The graduates of the program are certified to conduct third-party installation audits in accordance with the Aspen's Water Efficient Landscaping standards. There is a registration fee of fifty dollars, but it includes all course materials, testing, and lunches for all three days of the program. So those who are interested in becoming qualified and a different expertise, the Water Efficient Landscaping Training Course, September 23rd and 25th, is for you. And finally, kind of a fun announcement, and it really harks back to Mayor Torrey's days, that he restarted the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. And the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament will be hosted on August 10th at the City of Aspen Municipal Golf Course. It's to benefit Headquarters, a mental health provider and service providing agency in our community. There are sponsorship opportunities still available for people who'd either like to put together a four-person team for the scramble, and I'm putting together a team. And it's going to be a lot of fun out there. I think Torrey's putting together a former mayor's team. That should be fun. And I think they're going to have a dunk tank. And so if anybody's really been itching to take a shot at me, that's going to be your venue. So get out to the headquarters, the Mayor's Cup on August 10th, hosted by the Aspen Municipal Golf Course. Thank you Parks Department and the golf crew. So those are my announcements for today. Do we have any agenda amendments?
If the council wishes, we could take Resolution 104 and 105 and move those to action items if you so choose. Those are pertaining to the entrance to Aspen Environmental Impact Statement and Record of Decision and the contract with Jacobs Engineering, so.
I think we may be able to manage those with just some questions and leave them on consent. We'll have to see if it goes too far. We'll make that sort of movement.
Very good.
Okay, anything else, Pete?
Just if I may, obviously, the council has received a number of comments from folks on the West End and now from Cemetery Lane as well. Obviously, staff is very concerned for safety in the community as well. And we, I wanted to check in with council basically to get a straw poll for some direction for you that it's okay to proceed with throwing some resources at this. I do have a number of departments lined up, ready to meet at this point. The engineering team, the transportation group, the police department, to look at both what we've already done, what's working, what's maybe not working, what's best practice, and then if there's new interventions that we could potentially put into place. So just wanted to make sure that you're all, I assume you're all comfortable with that, but I want the folks also to know in the community that we really take this seriously, and we want to do it the best we can for that area of town.
Yeah, we have heard you, and we see it, and many of us live it in different aspects as well. And so we're very happy.
And our new power plant road traffic counter is showing us the data that, yeah.
It's just kind of beyond the pale. Is that supportive, Christine? Are you supportive?
Yes.
Yes, and we are as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Pete. Now we will go to council member board reports. Christine, if I'm not putting you on the spot, would you like to go first?
The two meetings I was at, John and Sam, are also in attendance. So I think there are alternates on both of those boards, so they can handle the board report.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for attending. We appreciate that. We know you're traveling. John, would you like to go first?
Sure. Christine and I attended an apture meeting on July 16th that wasn't, wasn't a long meeting, but we did discuss rightsizing, of course. And as this board knows, there have been two swaps, with a third underway following some requalification regulation changes. It's really difficult finding households interested in downsizing for all the reasons we talked about just the other night. Our moving assistance program is completely voluntary, just to clear any misconceptions about that. And it's only for, to assist those with financial need. And the board, the majority of us felt that downsizing should get priority and moving assistance. Christine, feel free to add anything that I missed.
No. Okay. You know, something for the apture board to consider that somebody else pointed out to me recently. I don't think it's the biggest stumbling block to downsizing or pursuing maximum occupancy, but when a senior moves, they can lose their homestead tax exemption, because you have to have lived in the residence for ten years. And, you know, that is something that we could consider trying to pursue for a legislative change through the CML agenda. I know it was something that another community tried a while ago to, you're not allowed to get your homestead tax exemption either if you rent a room. And so that would be something that prohibits some people from wanting to rent a room. So it's worth taking a look at. We'll talk to our CML body and see if they're willing to take an issue like that up. It is a little specific to affordable housing, but if it's enough to make someone in that, now they would still be eligible for any of the rebates through this Picken County or Aspen, but it's more the state homestead that is affected. And is there any other board today?
That was the only one I had.
I attended a Board of Health meeting with Christine on July 17th. A few things. Epidemiology update. There's an increase in wastewater showing rise in COVID, but that's not shocking due to the seasonality of the virus in the Aspen population. Older, high-risk individuals might be eligible for additional vaccine. The ACIP, the Advisory Committee for Immunization Practices, all seventeen members were removed by Health and Human Services Federal and replaced with seven questionable replacements. This is normally nonpartisan, but data-driven committee. They help decide what vaccines to recommend and who is eligible, which can determine insurance coverage as well. And there may not be an mRNA COVID vaccine this season because of these changes. It's up in the air. There are over thirteen hundred measles cases in the U.S., which is a thirty-year record for measles cases. And then the most pressing or whatever item was the, we voted on a recommendation to the B O C C on a distance between schools and childcare centers, daycares, from psychedelic healing centers. In a four or five-to-one vote, we passed a motion that was similar to, sorry, let me take a step back. Boulder and Colorado Springs are the only two municipalities that they highlighted that have changed the state legislature when it comes to this. Boulder went to five hundred feet from middle and high schools, while Colorado Springs went the opposite directions and went one mile. So being very restrictive, very interesting dichotomy there. And we recommended to the B O C C a thousand feet from schools, but no restrictions from child or daycares, which was prompted by a request of a woman who runs a psychedelic healing center at the ABC. And it's, I think, good to know for us, because it might be something we want to revisit if the B O C C does change it, the City of Aspen might want to come in line with what the B O C C has done. But that was the big item that day.
I believe it. It's a changing world. Very good. Well, for me, I would just like to say I was in Gunnison last week and attended the Club Twenty Policy Committee meetings. It's really good to hear what's going on across the state and some of the issues that other communities are facing that are very similar to ours. Some of the main committees were telecommunication, healthcare, transportation, and business affairs. And I found the business affairs comments very interesting, that for every person within the trades, welding, electricians, plumbers, roofers, these sort of things, for every seven that are retiring, only one is entering the trades. And they're seeing quite a shortfall. I heard presentations by a woman owner of the business Bishop Plumbing and Heating out of Glenwood Springs, who bemoaned having recently not been able to hire a new HVAC person who was highly qualified, because another firm got them who promised that worker they would just never have to go past Carbondale and deal with Aspen traffic. So we're starting to see more and more challenges and issues that way. And they wanted to emphasize that you can make a really decent living in the trades, and it's not always about going to college. Everyone has different abilities. Transportation was pretty bleak in terms of what's happening with the state funding and the federal funding. Healthcare, the comments were from the hospital there in Gunnison and how many services they try to provide. But again, very bleak and concerned about will they be able to sustain all their departments with the Medicaid cutbacks? And the impending cutback to the subsidy from using the Affordable Care Marketplace. So when people go to sign up for their insurance this fall, if they were using the Affordable Care Marketplace in Colorado, there will not be subsidies for the vast majority of users of that. And so as I was reading, rates can go up anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent, as well as some of the out-of-pocket conditions. I've read that the State Insurance Commissioner has already received requests for a twenty-eight percent increase in single-payer insurance rates across western Colorado, because we do not have competition here. And these things are starting to really rebound back to the public, as was predicted, that, you know, you cut off one leg of the health insurance and the reimbursement to the hospitals and senior centers and nursing homes, and the cost gets transferred to other people. And it's going to be people who maintain insurance. The biggest fear there is that the healthy people are the ones who will drop out, and the insurance pool will get older and sicker, and rates will continue to climb year after year. So that's the problem with just not having everybody insured. And finally, from that, there were some presentations on the cutbacks that we're all seeing federally. And as a local government and in concert with our county and all, we're very aware of what's happening on the ground. But the Governor's Office of State Planning and Budgeting is now predicting a one billion dollar ongoing shortfall in the state of Colorado budgets. This would be to be able to carry at any level the Medicaid cutbacks, the supplemental nutrition supplement SNAP benefits for food, and the energy tax credits, which are really eliminating jobs, unfortunately, as they go away, and costing higher prices for our energy. So I will be going to Steamboat Springs for Thursday, Friday of this week and listening to what's happening with our public lands, Water Subcommittee, and a few others. And so those are my board reports for today. Thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar. And the consent calendar consists of Resolution Number 95, Series of 2025, Appointment of the City's Representative to MEAN and NMPP. Those are our power providers, and we need a representative there to vote on those matters. The next is Resolution 101 and 107, Series of 2025, The Main Street Cabin Renovation Contract for Construction Services. The older home of Mountain Rescue, and then later a few city offices on Main Street, just a few blocks down from the Hickory House or so, they are going to be converted into affordable housing units. Resolution Number 102, Series of 2025, Lead Service Line Inventory Project. This is an excavation and pothole contract approval. The state and the federal governments have set standards for what type of water delivery pipes private individuals, private apartment complexes, and so on can have, and that the water provider is responsible for identifying what type of piping they have. This is a less invasive than actually drilling and pulling up pipes. They're just potholing. But it is our obligation to follow state law and make sure that our public has safe drinking water. Resolution 103, Series of 2025, Operation and Maintenance Contact for Rudi and Maroon Creek Hydroelectric Facilities. As most of you know, Aspen municipally electricity is a hundred percent renewable. That is a combination of purchased wind power and purchased hydropower and hydropower that we actually own through Rudi and Maroon Creek hydro facilities. They need regular update and maintenance, and so that's what that contract is. Resolution 104, Series of 2025, Setting forth the upcoming steps related to the entrance of Aspen and directing staff to pursue a reevaluation of the Environmental Impact Statement and the Record of Decision. Resolution 105, Series of 2025, Jacobs Engineering Change Order. This is moving the EIS reevaluation process into a reevaluation process. It's the entrance to Aspen. I believe quite firmly that a second bridge is going to be necessary to install the type of congestion management infrastructure this community wants and deserves, and to provide a second wildfire evacuation route. So we're starting the steps to get that moving. It is going to be a long and winding road. There will be plenty of opportunities for public input. There will be opportunities to meld into that process through the original Record of Decision, which calls for Aspen to increase its transportation demand management, TDM, measures, to maintain traffic levels. And that, in our Record of Decision, will allow us to weave in whatever solutions or programs the Twenty First Century Transportation Coalition comes up with or others. And it allows us, working with EOTC and with Picken County, to continue to look at the pinch points that are outside of the Buttermilk to Aspen Record of Decision boundaries, similar to the way the county is looking at the Smith Hill intersection for changes now, without having to reopen the entire Buttermilk to Basalt EIS. Then our final resolution, 106, Series of 2025, is the contract for the Wheeler Bar Concession Air. This is to make sure we still have spirits and snacks at all the great Wheeler performances. And that is the end of our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I just had a couple of comments. I don't really want to pull anything, but I did have a couple of comments.
Same, but I'll make a motion to pass the consent calendar.
Okay, discussion.
I just, first thing, I wanted to congratulate Aaron Loflin-Malakome as to being our representative at MEAN. Going forward, this is Resolution Number 95, and Resolution 103 has to do with the Rudi Maintenance Contract. Just wanted to point out that Rudi Reservoir and Dam turns fifty-eight years old today.
Really?
Yeah.
How about that?
So, great work. I really like having our hydropower here. It's clean energy.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
You know, I've seen old black and white films of John F. Kennedy going to Pueblo to ribbon-cut the Fry Arc Project, which took the water from the frying pan over to Pueblo for irrigation purposes, and so that the west could bloom and they could make a living as farmers and ranchers. But most of that water has now gone to municipal use over time. Sam?
I also want to congratulate Aaron, but I did want to ask why Tyler was stepping off. I just didn't say in the memo. Too busy?
Yeah, Tyler's duties have expanded a little bit, becoming Deputy City Manager. And so we are also looking to backfill Tyler with the new Public Works Director, but Aaron makes a logical choice to fill those shoes.
Okay, I figured. I just wanted to ask since it wasn't in the memo as to why. And the other comment I just wanted to make was how happy I am. And the other comment I just wanted to make was how happy I am about the conversion of the Main Street Cabin into affordable housing inside the Roundabout. I just think that's a great use of a city asset and its location, so.
Thank you. And that is being funded from the City Employee Housing Fund, and will be housing city employees.
Yep.
Okay. And it was city property, so it all makes sense that way. Very good. Thank you so much. I am just happy to move forward with the issues that are troubling our community, and the kind of standard work of our departments. You can see every time we have a consent calendar, the activities and actions they're taking to improve our infrastructure, keep our community safe, and just stay ahead of the curve. So Mike, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes, thank you. And Christine, did you have any comments? I apologize, not used to having half the meeting online.
Yeah, thanks for bearing with me. No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you so much. No, I appreciate you zooming in. We'd be very lonely without you.
Hey, Rachel?
Yes. John?
I noticed Steve Hunter's here from our water department. I wondered if he had any comments he'd like to make about our current water situation.
We'd have to come up to the microphone to do so.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's a hot topic.
You actually did a great job of kind of summarizing what's happening right now in the watershed, so.
Thanks.
Thanks for that. We are actually going to have our drought response committee meeting. We're watching it daily, hourly, on July 28th, which I believe is next Monday. And with the outcome of that, we're going to possibly come to council, probably your next regular council meeting on August 12th, to recommend moving into a stage two, depending. We were watching the monsoons, as you and I chatted a little bit, you know, we're getting these late afternoon storms, but when you measure it, people are like, this is great rain, but we measure it every time. And they're within hundreds of inches for storms. So they're not drought breakers, but we'll take what we can get. But you kind of hit the nail on the head with your summary. I was in the state drought meeting today, and they're doing a lot better. So they're using statewide averages, which makes this seem a little less painful if you kind of parse it out at the divide. It's much more bleak on the western slope than it is on the front range.
Good to know. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. I recall hearing from a former state hydrologist or meteorologist, excuse me, that approximately 75% of all the precipitation we get in Colorado evaporates. And that's part of what we're dealing with at these sort of high radiation levels, whether it's snow sublimating in the springtime and just evaporating, or just our rainfall we see today being immediately into the atmosphere.
Yeah, yeah.
And groundwater depletion as well.
Yeah.
We're low on groundwater, we're very dry in soil moisture, so yeah, not a lot of positive things, but keep your fingers crossed for rain.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah.
Okay. We have no notice of call-up. We have the first reading of ordinances, and that is Armory Hall, Connor Memorial Park redevelopment project, major public project, planned development amendment, certificate of appropriateness for major development, and related reviews. This is the Armory first reading of ordinance 06, series of 2025. So do we ask Mike to read that ordinance first before the presentation?
Actually, I think it comes after the presentation.
Okay. Haven't had Erin make first reading yet.
Just a reminder, there'll be two, I think there's two, both would need to occur, motion to read, and then motion to pass on first reading.
Okay.
Just a procedure.
Exactly.
Thank God you're here.
Welcome so much, Haley.
Gillian.
Gillian, I'm sorry.
It's all right. We both have brown hair and glasses.
My glasses don't work so well anymore.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Gillian White, Historic Preservation Officer and Principal Planner. And I am here before you tonight to present the first reading of ordinance number six, series of 2025, which speaks to proposed alterations to Armory Hall and Connor Memorial Park. Following staff presentation, council is requested to ask staff any clarifying questions to be answered at second reading of the proposed ordinance. The applicant has proposed alterations to Aspen's historic Armory Hall, a locally and nationally designated historic resource, to support a food hall, community gathering space, and visitor center, with additional updates to the adjacent Connor Memorial Park, which is also a locally designated property. The proposed scope includes but is not limited to removal of historic material, removal of parking spaces, fenestration changes, new exterior materials, new roof forms, additions to the armory, sidewalk realignment, and the introduction of new materials into Connor Memorial Park. And here for you is a picture of the Armory Hall in 1939. Given the scope of the project, the following sections from the Land Use Code are applicable: Public Projects Review, Certificate of Appropriateness for Major Development, Planned Development Amendment, Commercial Design Review, Mountain View Plane Review, Growth Management Review, and Special Review for Transportation and Parking Management. This slide provides an overview of the process to date, following acceptance of the complete application in March of this year. Following a couple of public hearings before the Historic Preservation Commission, which resulted in a recommendation of denial and conditions that would better meet applicable historic preservation-related guidelines and standards, council held a work session to discuss the HPC recommendation, and provide direction to the applicant team. At this work session, council directed the applicant team to work with Historic Preservation Staff and the HPC Chair and HPC Vice Chair to work through the outstanding items with the goal of aligning with HPC recommendations to the extent possible without negatively impacting the economic viability of the overall project. Following the work session, and per council direction, the applicant team met with HP staff and HPC Chair and Vice Chair on June 25th. At this meeting, the applicant provided several design options to better align with applicable preservation guidelines. The meeting resulted in agreement that many of the proposed changes will be worked through with Historic Preservation Staff and HPC Monitor, following council approval, as noted in the ordinance. This rendering, provided by the applicant team, shows the proposed Galena Street facade. This elevation is remaining as is outside of the proposed visitor center addition on the north side of the Armory, seen here on your left. This provided rendering depicts the proposed design for the Hopkins Avenue facade. The applicant is continuing to propose the removal of the historically significant Southern Eve, per council direction. The updated proposed design took some of the HPC feedback into consideration, and includes smaller canopies positioned at a lower height with a modified simple form. The applicant also made a slight reduction in the sizing of the proposed fenestration at Bays 2 and 5. The proposed roofing material, gutter material, and placement, and details of window openings were agreed to be worked through with Historic Preservation Staff and HPC Monitor, following council approval. Here you can see the previous design to better see what the applicant team has changed. So I'll toggle back and forth a couple times.
Okay.
So this is the current design, and then here's the previous design. So you can see the reduction in the size of the openings and the canopies. This provided rendering depicts the proposed design for the updated right-of-way and sidewalk area, as well as the vestibule addition and new fenestration. The applicant took some of the feedback from the HPC, and made the fenestration next to the vestibule smaller, and the canopy more simplified. The applicant has not provided renderings of the proposed park space, however, it was agreed upon that artificial turf is not appropriate, and the applicant will work with staff and HPC Monitor to identify an alternative material. Again, here, you can see the previous design, and then I'll go back to the updated design. And you can see again, this more simplified canopies and smaller openings. At this time, I will ask if council has any clarifying questions for staff to be answered at second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone want to jump in?
John.
John, okay.
I don't really have a question. Could you go back to your very first slide, though?
What, very first?
Very first one, this one.
The historic one?
Yes.
That one. I think this is the first time I've seen this image, and I noticed that the, all the first-floor windows are only half the size of the ones that are there currently.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to point that out to the room, the general public, that those have been changed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good. Sam?
All right, I guess I just want to talk about overall satisfaction between the applicant team and HPC. It felt a little contentious, as these things are, with how sensitive we are about this, and how my philosophy was that I wanted it to be as close to what HPC wanted as possible, without compromising the goal of the Armory itself. And it seems like compromise was reached, so you might be able to answer it now, but was compromise reached, and are people happy in a certain way, and upset because they had to compromise, because that's how it works?
First, I'll go back to this main rendering, because this is where a lot of the changes happen. I think that per council's direction, our meeting with applicant team and our two HPC representatives went really well. I think that there was a lot of discussion about items to where we could maybe find a balance and a compromise on meeting more appropriately aligning with guidelines, while also, you know, allowing for a successful project. I know that Cara is here, so I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that or how you feel, but would you like to?
If you would like to hear.
If you would like to, you'll come on up then.
Cara is the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, so she has been involved.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for all the attention you're giving this project. I would agree with Gillian. I think we had a very productive and collaborative meeting with the design team. It's helpful to understand a lot of the reasoning why they've landed where they have with this design specifically related to the openings, because we, you know, saw it at the very end of the process. But I think we were very happy with where they landed. We'd love to see these openings go away, but I understand that this is a significant improvement, and I appreciate that the design team came with multiple options for us to discuss. The next rendering, where they removed that L-shaped awning, I think made a very significant change, at least for us in compliance with the guidelines. So that was really great to see.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
Thanks.
And as far as the overall commission, we have a meeting tomorrow night, so I think that we'll be providing this information to them as well. We haven't had all of the updated materials to present at a previous meeting, so we'll be giving them that update. But I think the overall sentiment is that they're happy that, you know, there's willing to be a collaboration and some changes made.
Thank you. You know, it's a real challenge to do adaptive reuse.
Yes.
And that's what this is, you know? And you think about so many structures that, you know, go through different iterations of their lifetime, and it's always changed. You pointed out the smaller windows became larger windows, let a little more sunlight in the building in the past. And I just appreciate all the work that HPC has been doing on this, and contributing, and being willing to compromise, as well as our design team. The only question I would have for second reading, and it's really just for the overall team to take a look at, is I've really wondered whether the recycle station should be on Hopkins, where we are having a larger, new, grassy area, and would allow to keep a few more parking places in the back. And I'm just a little concerned about between losing the parking on Hopkins, and having a visitor center, and the loss of parking in the back. I just really have wondered about that. And the other has been to make sure the elevator is really going to be sufficient for the food operators and the public to use. I, you know, I can just see people trying to load food up while people are trying to go up to the third floor, and, you know, take things down to the basement floor. And, you know, I've been told it's a very fast elevator, so it should work fine, but that it's sized appropriately for really what it's going to be used for.
Got it.
Okay, and this is first reading. There is no public hearing on first reading. There will be a public hearing on second reading, and we will anticipate that being two weeks from now?
Yes.
At the next regular, unless enough stuff comes up, that you need to continue it again for the meeting after that.
Sure. And for your approval, like our recommendation, also, I wanted to make sure Councilmember Benedetti didn't have any comments.
Yes, thank you for that. Councilmember Benedetti?
No, I don't have any questions, just I think this is a really good example of public process working between council and commissions to getting a better product. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. And we are, as a board, I'd say, open to hearing the concerns, and they'll come at that next work session with HPC.
Definitely. We'll include that as an update at second reading, should anything arise. Staff's recommendation is approval. We recommend that council approve the ordinance on first reading, and set a public hearing for August 12th for second reading.
Okay. First, we need a motion to read the ordinance.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or roll call? I think everything has to be a roll call in the city. Sorry about that. Christine, we're doing a roll call. My phone's all yours.
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes.
This is ordinance number 06, series of 2025, and ordinance of the Aspen City Council approving major public project review, planned development, project review and detailed review, historic preservation certificate of appropriateness for major development, conceptual and final review, growth management review, commercial design review, conceptual and final ESA Mountain View Plane Review, and parking and transportation review for the following properties: Block 93, lots K through M, commonly known as the Aspen Armory Building, and Block 93, Lot N, and Lot O, and West 22 and 1/2 feet of Lot P, commonly known as Connor Memorial Park, city and town site of Aspen, County of Pickens, State of Colorado.
Thank you. Very well done. Now, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ordinance number six.
Seconded with a comment.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah. I just wanted to add, if you could talk at the next reading about snow safety, and then like shade and heat issues with the removal of the tree, I just want to make sure those aren't going to be too big of issues. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We would now need the motion to approve. It's been made and seconded. Mike, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. And do we actually need a motion to put it on the August 6 meeting?
No.
12th.
We don't need that motion, but thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll put it on there if it's ready. Okay. Thank you all who've attended on behalf of that item. Now we're going to have ordinance number seven, series of 2025, first reading, the visitor benefit and tax promotion amended uses. Mike, will we have a motion to read this?
Would you like a quick couple of statements to this issue?
Oh, I thought we'd do it after reading, but we could do it either way. Yeah, let's have some quick statements to this.
Yes. The ordinance that's going to be before you is seeking to expand allowable uses of the 2% lodging tax that's currently dedicated to both transportation and tourism promotion. This is to expand allowable uses to include additional administrative costs that include leasing or purchasing of real estate. The intent behind this is to really partner with our current provider for tourism promotion, Accra, who you know is currently located in the Armory Building, but also something that we just discussed about trying to proceed with a new public space. And so eventually, we need to find a new home for Accra, and this will give us some additional tools to be able to do that.
And this is somewhat for the administrative back-of-house activities of the chamber?
Correct.
Because the Armory project does include a new visitor center, which will make up for the loss of the visitor center that we've had, either near the parking garage, or the temporary one in the power plant, and now the one in Rio Grande.
Absolutely.
At the Armory. Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion for first reading, the visitor benefit and tax promotion ordinance? Is there a motion for first reading, the visitor benefit and tax promotion, ordinance number seven?
To read it or to approve it? To read it. So moved.
We don't need to read it because it's not first reading.
No, it is.
It is first reading. Yeah, yeah. To read it, to read it.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second.
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes.
This is ordinance number 07, series of 2025, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending section 23.50.050 Tourism Promotion Fund of the Municipal Code of the City of Aspen and the use of the funds derived from the visitor benefit and promotion tax.
Thank you for that. And let me ask a question, Pete. This ordinance will not change the amount of, that is dedicated towards transportation?
That is correct. This keeps those existing voter-approved allocation percentages.
Thank you very much for that. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'd ask a couple of questions real quick.
Yes, we'll have discussion.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to ask, so we talked about this before with the hope, at least in my mind, that they would be purchasing and not leasing, but obviously, so this allows them to use the money towards leasing, which they haven't been able to use this money towards in the past.
Correct.
And then, secondly, is there a sunset on this? Or like, because I assume once, if they do buy something and they, once they've paid it off, that we might want to make sure that they can't use it for that purpose anymore?
So any such uses of this nature will have to come before council, for council to set the parameters of the use. So there'll be opportunities for council to weigh in on all those types of questions.
Okay, that's really all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Those are good questions.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? Christine, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I think we did that.
We did that? Oh, no. You did a motion to read, not approve. Oh, yeah, we did, and you opened it up to discussion. Sorry. Now I'm getting... Mike, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you so much. We have no public hearings, no action items, and now I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We should let Christine second one of these.
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Mike, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes, and thank you very much, and thank you Grassroots TV for our broadcast. We appreciate it.